We're on.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to this January 5, 2012, school board meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Melissa, would you like to lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Happy New Year, everybody. I'll continue by reading our mission statement. The Newmarket School District is committed to the highest standards of quality education by creating a safe and successful learning community that embraces diversity and responds to the social, emotional, intellectual, and physical needs of every child. We are dedicated to fostering links to the broader community to ensure that students develop lifelong skills, enabling them to be contributing and productive members of society. This evening, we unfortunately don't have a recognition scheduled due to conflicts, et cetera. So we'll stay tuned for that next time. So at this point, then, welcome visitors. It's good to see folks in the room. If anyone would like to make any comments, this is the time to do so.
William Foster, Langs Lane. After last night's public hearing at the town council, I left very enraged, ignorant of this town. I'd like to apologize to Dr. Hayes for the sane people in the crowd, from the sane people in the crowd, for not allowing you to complete your presentation on what is actually needed for the future of this school district. I'm starting to get very nervous about our district and the future of it, and specifically the building at the junior/senior high school. Like I've said many times before, I graduated in '89 from there. The last renovation was a gym. That's basically it, was a gym. The big thing on the table right now is fire and life safety, from what I understand. And this goes out to the entire board, but it also goes to Dr. Hayes. I have just a couple of questions that I'd like to have publicly answered sometime in the future. I know it's impossible to answer them tonight because there probably is not an answer that you can give. First off, it's been out there publicly that people are not recognizing the letter from the fire marshal through the town fire department as basically being a legitimate letter. Is there a way that that formal letter from the state fire marshal could be made public in some way, shape, or form? Secondly, short notice, vote's coming up very soon. Is there a way to get the state fire marshal to come and talk? And basically go over what he has basically gone over with Rick Malaski and the board in saying what those fire and life safety issues are coming from a state official. There's a feeling among the town that there's point-blank lying on your part. I know it's not true. It's unfortunate. Again, I like to use the term ignorant because it's basically just not willing to learn, is what it is. Secondly, it kind of goes along the lines with that fire and safety. Number one, is if everything doesn't get voted in, or just fire and life safety gets voted down, what happens next? They come, put the locks on the doors. What do we do? What happens to our student population? Do we pick 30 kids, they go there? Do we pick 10 kids, do they go here? Do we send teachers door-to-door? What exactly is the logistics of having a school shut down in a town, in a municipality? It's never happened around here, so we have really no guideline to show by it, except for history itself. That's the first part of that question, fire and life safety. Second part, is the town liable if it is closed down? Can the town and the district be held liable for not providing a public education? I think it's state mandated somewhere, and you have it in a mission statement, that you must provide an education to the students and to the populace in this town. If we don't oblige in doing that, are we held liable legally? Could parents come after us as a district, come after us as a town legally? And say, "You're not providing"? Class action lawsuit, whatever it may be, I have no idea. It's just a question. Another one is teachers' contracts. I know they are in negotiations now. They get a three-year deal. We have roughly two and a half years left before we have to do something or it's going to get closed. If they get another three-year deal, if, who knows what's happening with that? You can't talk about it, and I understand. If that building is closed, are we still paying their contract for, say, a said final year? If that is, that's 85% of your budget, which in this year, $15 million, rough number, $11 million goes to nothing because there's no building, no education being provided. And finally, the last question I have. At last night's meeting, there was a comment made about the expansion fund and going back into the general fund or being used for other things said other than purchasing land or renovating a building. Could you go over exactly what that fund can only be used for? Because I know it can't go back into the general fund. It has to be spent on certain things. Understanding that all these questions I've just asked you are unable to answer them, could we have them answered at the next school board meeting? Or possibly at the next question-and-answer forum that I believe that's going to be happening here soon? I have a freshman in high school. No matter what happens, other than closing the building down, it may not affect her. But I do have a fifth grader. Whatever happens is going to affect her. I can't move. Nobody's going to buy my house. I can't provide tuition. Can't afford it. So I'm stuck here. So I really need to know what's going to happen to my kid in roughly three years. What am I going to do with my child? What is her education going to be? Am I going to get to pick a town? Do you pick a town for me? Just need to know. Some easy questions. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Anyone else like to make comments this evening? Okay. Thank you. And so we'll move on at this point to, and I guess before I go on, there's lots of questions were raised now, and a lot of questions have been coming into the SAU office via email and phone calls and other forms. So, and I know that those things are all being collected and, Jim, at some point, when you can speak, we can talk about the question-and-answer or frequently asked questions piece.
Yeah, because a lot of things have been on my plate lately. I haven't really made progress with the frequently asked questions. But certainly, I intend to answer a lot of questions, and I know I can answer these at the PTO meeting, the Q&amp;A session there, and then get it out in some other format as well. But there are answers.
Can you remind us when that is?
It's the 10th, which is Tuesday of next week, correct, Terry? Yeah. At 6:30 in the band room at the junior/senior high school.
Also known as voting day.
Yes.
Stop and vote and...
So you can vote and come on over.
And I understand there's babysitting being provided?
In the library, which is right next door.
Okay. So that said, let's move on to minutes from our past meeting or so. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding the minutes from our December 8th school board meeting? Any discussion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. And that's, is that all we have? That one set? Okay. Terrific. Okay. Melissa?
Hello.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
You have a student report for us this evening?
I do. So tonight is the basketball games against Epping, and they're hot button, I think. So I don't know if you're done here, you could head over there. And girls' basketball is 2-4 and boys' basketball is 5-0. So we hope that they keep those records going. We have finals not next week, but the week after that, and that would close out our first semester. And Penguin Plunge is February 4th, so I encourage everyone to go out and support our Penguins. We have our senior halfway there dinner, which sadly, I'm not quite sure on the date. I tried to get an answer on that, but it's going to be within the next couple of weeks, so after finals week, I think. And project graduation bingo is this Saturday.
Thanks. So the Penguin Plunge, I'm recalling that is a fundraiser for Special Olympics?
Yes.
And well-attended and we, Newmarket always does a terrific job.
We do. We always have, we always get some kind of recognition for the highest amount of participation for our school, for like the size of our school. So that's always great.
So the Penguins are the students. Are the students. And they're fundraising, so if you know...
Right. A lot of them have online accounts going, so you can donate online. So if you know any students that are doing it, then they probably have an online donation thing going.
And if you don't and are interested in bringing the...
Contact.
This junior/senior high school probably main office?
Yep. And the head of this is Jill Brenton at the high school. She's the math teacher, so she's one to contact for that.
I'm sure if people were interested, they could write a check probably made out to Special Olympics and drop it off at the high school office. I'm sure that would work, so that would be great.
All right. Any other questions for Melissa? All right. Halfway through your senior year, almost.
Yay.
All right. Dr. Hayes, do you have a superintendent's report you'd like to share?
Yes, I do. I have several announcements here relative to the elementary school. Let me take care of those first. There's some winter field trips coming up. And yesterday, for example, the Hot Shots Exhibition Team performed at Newfields Elementary School. On January 13th, the kindergarten classes will be going to the Children's Museum in Dover. Trips will be taken entirely within the regularly scheduled kindergarten session, so the school schedule isn't affected for those trips. Third grade classes are making their annual trip to the Lowell National Historical Park to see the Mills on January 17th and 19th. The annual Big Jump Rope Show is coming up at the end of this month. And so there are practices coming this Sunday from 2:10 to 4:00 at the gym in the high school. The show itself will be on Sunday, January 22nd at 2:30. And that's also in the high school gym. And students are asked to arrive at 2:10 on the 22nd. So again, January 22nd at 2:30. It's just a terrific event. If you haven't seen it, take advantage. Lastly, from the elementary, it's part of the PTO. Thankfully, the PTO really graciously agreed to move its meeting to the junior/senior high school, and really also, I think, we took over your agenda. Not sure what you had planned, Terry, but I'm sure it will take over your agenda at 6:30 on Tuesday, January 10th. And not only will Mr. Andruski and I be there, but I believe, Dan, you're going to be there, right? January 10th, that meeting? I'm pretty sure. I asked the architect to be there as well, so I'm pretty sure you confirm with that. Lastly, in terms of my report, is that, as you know, we had a meeting on December 29th with the Budget Committee. Some of you were able to be in attendance. Joan and I walked them through the budget proposal and answered questions the best we could and explained different elements. Thankfully, we were able to go through the entire budget in one evening, so that was a good thing. So we are still due to come back on January 9th. And I know Joan has a few questions I think she has to respond to, and if they have more questions, I'm sure they'll send them to her. Other than that, I'm sure it's their discussion and probably some more refreshing and question-and-answer of what we've gone over. I didn't put it in the written report here, but it reminds me to say that immediately after that meeting, we have a meeting because we need to do one and maybe two things. One thing would be to firm up the warrant. That would be the warrant that goes to the public hearing on the 17th. And then the other, should there be an agreement, a tentative agreement with teachers, then it's ratified, we'd have an opportunity at that point to put it on the warrant. So that still remains to be seen. We're still in negotiations. And that's all I have for superintendent's report.
Okay. Continue into facilities?
Facilities, as you know, on December 21st, and then again, last evening, we made a presentation to the town council seeking their okay for us to designate the use of open space fund money to the tune of $380,173 as part of payment for purchasing properties Carpenter, Perkins, and Walker. And should the voters obviously approve of the purchase at the district meeting. And so that still rests in the hands of the town council. They didn't take action. It was just a public hearing last evening that people got to speak on. The, let's see, I mentioned the Q&amp;A. I mentioned the Q&amp;A on January 10th. One thing that I didn't mention, although I briefly got a slide through last night, was that there are tours that the high school principal has agreed to host. People expressed an interest, through Kelly especially, to have tours while students are there. And so we set one up for Thursday, January 12th at 8:00 a.m. And then one the next day, Friday, the 13th, at 12:30 p.m. And I know Chris has said he's going to try to arrange students so that it can be a student-guided tour. People who come, I think the principal said it'd be helpful if you could call in advance and just let us know, so we have some sense of the numbers. But in any case, when you show up, please go in through the gym entrance. Not through the main entrance of school, but we're going to meet in the gym first, get organized there, and then move out into the building. So again, that's terrific. We didn't set one up for the evening. Well, it's just a busy time of year for evenings, and yet we'll see how this goes. And if there still is a need for an evening one, then we'll do that, too.
He did say there's a sign-in when they go through the gym, they will have to sign in.
Yeah, they'd have to sign in.
Like you would if you went to the school any other time.
Right.
So be prepared.
Right. Junior/senior high school fire and life safety update. I really was able to get through that last night. So you did hear about the meeting that we'd had with folks from Harriman and SFC Engineering trying to finalize how we expend the rest of that $200,000 and then taking a look at what issues could be corrected without money. And as I mentioned last evening, the biggest challenge of it all is this weight room and the fact that it's on a short time schedule, that eventually, we're going to have to give that space up. And it can't be occupied with people, equipment, storage, or anything. So it has to just lie vacant. And there's no place in that building big enough to support that. So that's a concern, but we're hoping that we'll at least get some type of abeyance, if you will, for a period of time to still operate there before it has to be closed. SFC and Harriman are working on a, and I didn't say this last night, but working on a summary of what we have done with the $200,000. Because, again, it was open-ended when it was approved as a warrant, and it was our intent to use dollars as wisely as we could to get as much done as we could and so maximize the value of that $200,000. And again, we've come pretty close to using it all, and we intend to try and use it all. But what we want to have is a report both for you folks, public, and the local and state fire officials, so that they can take a look at, now, I think it's also coming as a narrative, but also as a floor plan drawing that shows we fixed hardware door here. We did this, we did that. And so it'll be a great, I think, you know, I think it's going to help us in sending a message, at least, to the Fire Marshal's Office that we are serious about this, and we took a pretty serious step this summer, and now we're continuing through with it. So that's something that's still in the works. As I mentioned last evening, the $770,000 really gets targeted at two things. One is at the junior high end near the parking lot to create a stairwell elevator tower. So you've got something that takes care of access and egress for that, both floors. And the other, which is much more problematic, is the egress from the chemistry and physics labs. It needs to have two means of egress from those rooms, and neither of those is code compliant. And so to fix it, you need to shut those rooms down until the fix is put in place. And, you know, preliminary estimates say that's going to eat into at least two months of the school year, which just places some key programs that there's no other room to operate in. So that's a problem. But if we do decide, if the voters do vote, and if we do decide to do these fire and life safety steps, that's what's in the future. Facebook pages, there are two Facebook pages growing by leaps and bounds, it seems. And so people should all be made aware that if they're used to accessing Facebook, there is the Newmarket Taxpayers Facebook page, and then there's also the Solutions for Newmarket Schools. And as somebody who's new to Facebook, you can easily see, once you get there, what a terrific communications tool it is. And so I encourage anybody that is in the community to, if they're so inclined, to try and access those. Facilities committee meeting, I really do apologize, but life's been extremely busy here as a superintendent lately, and so getting to this facilities master plan hasn't risen high enough for me to take it to the next step. So I really don't want to meet with people for the sake of meeting. I really, I know what needs to be done, it's just a matter of time to get it done. But I will get that done because I want us to move past that, to have them put a stamp of approval on something and then bring it forward to you folks. So that's in the works. And that's all I have on facilities.
Thank you. That's a lot of ground covered. Any questions on those topics?
I have one question, Ms. Chair. Dr. Hayes, yesterday in your presentation, you had a recent update on the current facilities, that the plaster...
Oh, yes.
From the ceiling was coming down. You could see the rafters and then the bulging bricks. And I had several inquiries about safety to the students, current safety, and you had alluded to that yesterday. Could you just go over that for us?
Yeah, I will.
And watch us through those steps?
Yeah, I mean, it was obviously disconcerting to see this. And so we brought in a structural engineer immediately, well, within 24 hours, which is about as fast as you can make it happen. And we're assured of student safety. That was my first thing. And so students are safe in the rooms that they're in. But the bulging bricks is an issue that probably will need to be addressed, as well as the ceiling being degraded. And again, you've got a drop ceiling like this, but there's a plaster ceiling up above that is coming down. And not really sure what the cause is. I knew the engineer took a whole host of photos and intends to provide a report as to what might be the remedy. I think one of those things clearly is going to have to be an inspection of every ceiling in there to assess where we're at. What I did learn, again, this is all verbal here, is that the exposure of the wooden beams that are supporting the floor up above creates an avenue of fire growth. And as you've seen through a lot that I've talked about, fire and life safety, it's a lot about the spread of fire and smoke, preventing that. And so the proper remediation is to reseal that ceiling, whether it's with plaster, I'm not sure, but to address the ceilings where we've lost that barrier. That's the best I know, and I don't know when to expect a report, but it should be very soon.
Thank you.
The bulging brickwork, is that on the exterior of the building?
Yes. Yes.
And...
I mean, again, I don't think it's judged to be a hazard to people at this point, or we would have said so and we'd be addressing that. But left unchecked, it does become a hazard of eventually bricks just falling. So you need to address it. And we'll do that. What draw our attention to it was the constant battle of water coming in when it rains and coming in through windows in this particular room, and then trying to address that. And you can see it, but it's not, I don't think it's an imminent danger of falling, but it's got to be addressed.
Okay.
That's all I know at this point.
Sounds like it's going to be, continue to be watched.
Yes.
As we go forward.
Yes, yeah.
Want to say, look forward to more on that, but I really don't.
You will. We'll keep you apprised.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have on the program this evening is request for tuition of a Rochester student into the district.
Jean Parsons is the Director of Student Services, as she comes up. I would draw your attention to a policy that I attached, which re-revised in February of 2011, and it deals with admission of non-resident students and tuition. So we clearly have clean district policy on how to go about this. I think at the time, whoever thought. But not too long ago, probably two, three weeks ago, I think, Jean approached me with a particular thorny matter that was being dealt with, and people were looking to... The student is now in Rochester, but people were looking to Newmarket as something that could really be helpful, and it would involve tuitioning the student to our high school. Jean?
You've seen this proposal?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about it? I don't want to go through it unnecessarily. I know everyone's had a long day.
Just give the essence of it.
Essence, okay. Well, I can tell you quickly that our attorney, Jerry Zellin, who is our special ed attorney, also is the attorney in Rochester. And he approached me, knowing our school district, knowing what our high school was like, knowing the student that he was dealing with in Rochester, and the student's particular issues that had occurred to him in Spalding High School, a larger inner-city school with some inner-city problems. Young child with special education needs who was not doing well there. And the parents had, who had had a very negative experience at the Spalding High School with some other students and bullying, very severe. And so he came to me thinking, well, this student, the parents through the Rochester schools had already arranged to have him tuitioned to the SST, Sequel School Technology and the Building Trades. He was doing very, very well there, but they were tutoring him in the tutoring academy. So he wasn't really getting a full education. And attorney Zellin thought that, knowing our high school and the qualities of our high school and the size of our high school, that it might be a good match if we were willing to entertain the idea of it. And so I spoke with the special ed director there, got more information, approached Dr. Hayes, and also met with the principal of the high school, Mr. Andruski, and Crystal Callahan, the coordinator there, to make sure that this was something feasible. We set up a meeting for the parents to come in and the student to meet with Mr. Andruski and Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan, because I left it in Mr. Andruski's hands, if he didn't feel this was appropriate or he wasn't wanting to entertain it, then as far as I was concerned, that was the end of it. But everybody felt this was a nice young man. They all felt that we could indeed do this for him and for the district. It could help us, help him very much. And to make a long story short, the parents agreed to settle their suit against the Rochester school system if we would accept this child to be tuitioned into us. The situation is, is that he's tuitioned, and Joan can give more information about what the tuition ideal... They would pay for services. If at any point we're unhappy, we want it to end, we can end it. It's money to us. There are services already, he would join groups of students who are already receiving services in our district. He would come over on our, all transportation would be paid for by Rochester. Any extracurricular, anything that he has to do would all be a Rochester responsibility, summer school, all of that. But I'm hoping that we would consider doing this. It does bring in little income for us. It also puts us in a position where Rochester is very in our debt, and that's not a bad thing. We may someday want to have the option of doing the same with a student that we can't find a place for. And I just, I feel like we have a unique situation, and we could really help this young man. I'm hoping the board will consider it, approve it.
I know the proposal to me made a lot of good sense. And the student, you know, knows students from our school. And I know when he took the tour of our school, bumped into kids that he knew. So I think it'd be a very easy transition. that he knew, so I think it'd be a very easy transition for him and a good thing. And again, it doesn't set up real additional services for it, he'll just blend in with what programs we have. And we help out Rochester, and we bring in some tuition money. I don't know if you have a number of any information on that?
Yep. On an annual basis, sorry. On an annual basis, it would be $21,234, but because he would be joining us on day 77, based upon per diem rate, it would bring in this year $12,200.
I have a question, and just reading over this policy that we have. Number three says, when a sending district is responsible for tuition payment, approval must be received from the sending district school board before the local school board acts on a request. So has their school board done what they need to do?
Yes, they've already, they've already got, they've already got a signed legal agreement between the parent and the school district that's all been approved.
Okay.
But again, it's pending on our approval. We actually have a copy of that.
Okay.
Any other questions, Chair?
Jean, the money stated, would this be also the services rendered at SST?
No, Rochester will be paying for that separately.
I don't see it here in the policy, but it may be there. But perhaps to the money, is that a revenue to the district? Is that how that gets processed, right? Okay.
Yeah.
A sneeze coming in.
I could see that.
Sneezing on TV. I guess my thoughts on it are that, you know, New Market is a single-town school district, and the town of New Market, you know, has its own police and fire, and it reminds me some things that we're trying to do with the efficiencies committee, which is, look outside our borders to help solve our problems. And this seems to me a school version of that. But aside from that, it seems like the neighborly thing to do, and it sounds like it's a win-win for everyone, so I'm entirely in support.
Good. Thank you.
I'm in support, too. Can I ask a couple picky questions?
Sure, absolutely.
So every year, this is renegotiated?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then-
The tuition would be renegotiated every year, yep.
Based on whatever the student needs. If, so who, are we proposing the IEP to Rochester, or is Rochester proposing the IEP to us?
Rochester will be doing the IEP proposal.
Okay.
We will offer suggested goals and objectives, but they will be proposing the IEP.
Okay.
They will be chairing the meetings, they will be contacting the parents, sending out all the paperwork, all that good stuff, yes.
So will you be recommending the level of services, or was that like a collaborative approach between Rochester?
Rochester did the IEP, and-
Right.
Yeah, and they've given us the IEP as to what's on it. But next year, it'll be a collaborative, because our, assuming he comes here, our teachers will be recommending what they think he needs.
Sure.
And then the Rochester out-of-district coordinator, who will be the case manager, will then work with this. This student doesn't require a lot of special services beyond just special education and support.
Okay. Thank you.
Jean, in terms of traveling, he'll travel here to New Market-
Yes.
And then we'll bus him to SST?
No. Yes, yes, he's going to come here to New Market, they'll transport him here, he'll get on the bus with our students and go over to SST, and then come back from SST with our students in the morning session, and then he'll be picked up at the end of the day by Rochester. It's a pretty easy transition. I'd say he's got a couple of, two or three friends already in the district.
He could try taking our extracurriculars.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And one of the things that they asked was, if next year he decided not to continue in SST, would we consider having him come full day? And I felt that if we accepted him, that would be something we would have to be willing to do, which would be fine from my perspective.
Any other questions or comments? I think we need to take formal action on this, though. Linda, as our typical motion crafter-
Pretty challenged today.
Or anyone else like to?
A long day. Well, I will make a motion to approve the request to allow student SC, a Rochester resident, to tuition into the New Market High School.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, it's terrific.
Okay. The school warrant.
You have, you have a draft here, the school warrant, and actually, in the correspondence part of your packet, is a letter from the attorney, which helped frame some of the updates that you see here. Article one is really still the same as before. We don't know the total cost for the properties, but it still is worded as seeking money from those two funds, the Open Space Bond Fund and the Expansion of School Facilities Capital Reserve Fund. Article two is the school district's operating budget. We reordered these a little bit. The thing that is new there is the second number, you now have a number for the default budget, $14,693,030, which looks to be, what, about, no, slightly higher, the default is slightly higher. How much is that, 70? No, 60, $67,000, it looks like, something like that. So we have that one really firmed up in terms of the language. Articles three and four really relate to negotiations and hopefully getting a collective bargain agreement. As I said, we're still in process on that, so nothing has really changed there. Article five, I think the wording may be a little different, again, based on what the attorney had done, so let me read the whole thing. "To see if the school district will vote to establish a capital reserve fund for," and this is now capital, so this is the title of the fund, "construction of a new school building and renovation of existing school buildings, and raise and appropriate the sum of $769,270 to be placed in the fund and to designate the school board as agents to expend the fund." And the intended purpose there is to create a separate fund from which you could do one of two things. You could deal with your fire and life safety, so that's the renovation of existing buildings piece, and you could also apply that money to construction of a new school. And to answer one of the questions earlier, the expansion of school facilities fund does not allow you to do that. You can't spend that money for the fire and life safety pieces, that's a renovation. It's only there for expanding our school facilities, and that can be the purchase of land, or it can be the construction of new building. But it has such a narrow purpose, and so as we talked with the attorney about the need for flexibility in this particular area, this $770,000, this is the language that she recommends, and I realize it's another fund to set up, but I believe you do need that flexibility. Article six, it comes later on underneath the building report, the business report, and I think I'll leave it till then, but I don't think article six is going to be necessary. So that's a good thing, one less thing to worry about trying to find money on. Article seven, I don't believe it will be as well, so. And that's for further architectural and engineering fees. Well, I'll know better by, you know, the next time you see this, which will be January 9th, but right now, I don't think we'll be looking for that. I think it really is going to be helpful to us to have a very narrow field of warrant articles here, so. And that's all. So that's what it looks like, and again, the January 9th, we have that budget meeting with the budget committee, and then following that, we'll have our own meeting where we'll finalize this as best we can for the public hearing. Okay? That's it, on the warrant.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Article five, that new fund that you're talking about-
Yep.
It's just, it's probably a personal thing, but the term renovation in there, really, I know what you're going for, because it's a fire and life safety issue, but I just feel that that word implies something that other people are going to take to another whole level, that we've already researched that that building cannot be completely renovated and turned into, you know, a new building. And I just don't want to mislead anyone in them. I mean, could it be changed to talk about fire and life safety codes, or could it be more specific than just the term renovation?
I can run that by the attorney and get an opinion on that.
Okay.
Sure. So it would really further narrow the scope of this, of this article, so it wouldn't, couldn't be just used for-
Right.
Well, it would.
Any, any non-fire and life safety-related renovations.
Now, when we, when we say fire and life safety, we're also including that ADA.
Right.
It isn't, I'm not sure ADA is always a fire and life safety issue, but it lumps the two together. So as we've, as we've been addressing, and you saw me talk to some of that last night, they get intertwined.
Right, well, ADA compliant egress is fire and life safety.
Fire and life safety, I agree. I agree.
But I just don't want people to get confused with the idea-
I agree, I see.
Because you've been told, we've been told, there is no, there will be no support-
Not a way.
-from the Department of Education to renovate that building on that footprint. It doesn't fit the needs of our district or anything, and I don't want people to get confused with that.
Just to clarify, because it's a good moment to say that. When you say support, many people think money, and some people think, well, we'll do it without their money. It's not just that. They have to approve the building itself to comply with the minimum size requirements that are specified in law.
Right.
And you don't have enough room to build a building that's going to be compliant and still meet the program that we're offering kids today. And so for both of those reasons, the site does not support, nor would the Department of Ed support a building on that, on that site.
Thank you.
You're welcome. But I will talk to the attorney, and we'll get a different look, perhaps, next time.
Any other questions on the warrant?
That's a great point, though.
Thanks.
All right. Moving along, then. We've got the next revision of the NESDEC enrollment.
Right. I've given you the full copy, in case the areas you're interested in, they talk about, you know, historical analysis and all of those things. But you'll see a page that follows the report that I prepared with three graphs, because it, NESDEC is, is an acronym for New England School Development Council that provides a variety of services to districts throughout New England, one of which is enrollment projections. And we are a member of NESDEC, so we get services from them. And every, usually every December or January, they provide an enrollment projection for us as far out as, as the proper procedures will take it. And so where we had that demographic study in 2010, to us, this annual report, although it's not as, using as many in-depth factors as what was done in the demographics, it really is using the industry standard for projecting enrollments. And so we use this as a check. How close were we with that demographic study? Has anything changed? Now, because it doesn't use those others, you know, you can, you can see that there are times when, from year to year, NESDEC can fluctuate. In fact, in my experience, I used to use sometimes a three-year average of NESDEC as a truer number, or even a five-year average of NESDEC as a truer number. We don't have that data at this point. So I'm just showing on this graph, I've got the NHSAA data, along with what NESDEC produced a year ago, and then what they most recently produced. And as, as you can see there, I think the trend lines stay, trend lines stay pretty close together there, and, and the, let's see. In fact, if you look at, you know, you look at the, where are we here? Grade six through eight, because again, we're mostly focused on these, the secondary school, it's very close to, they're all close together for all three reports, it's almost identical. And again, it shows that modest growth that I have talked about. And then grade nine through 12, the 2011 report, the one that we just got, is even more closely aligned with a report that was done two years ago. And again, it shows that, that modest growth in enrollment as in our future. So it's useful information. I don't know if you have any questions on anything else you saw in the report, but I summarized it in these graphs.
Any questions?
Very straightforward.
Right, very straightforward. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I guess we have some discussion regarding construction management and project sequencing by the folks from Harriman Architects and Engineers. Thanks, gentlemen, for coming, and thanks for being understanding with rescheduling. We had you on an earlier agenda, but I think this is a probably better evening.
If you can speak at the podium, that makes it a lot better for folks at home, so. But that's Dan Bissong, who's standing, and Dan has been our architect throughout, and one of the support people in his office that we occasionally work with as well is David Reenstra. And I, the handouts you provided me back when, from the priest, they all have copies in their packet. You know, these charts, remember that? Okay.
I just need the other one. Again, I'm Dan Bissong from Harriman. Dave Reenstra is with me as well. We've been together with Harriman for quite some time, and in case I get stuck, I get Dave to help me. So anyhow, what was a whole issue is, where are we going from here? We basically started off with a charge to check the property to see if it is capable of supporting a educational facility, basically due diligence. So the majority of that whole exercise was to check the site for wetlands, geotechnical soils, conditions, checking utilities on site, so we had discussions with local officials. Department of Transportation, because we're impacting a road. Department of Environmental Services, we have a wetlands. That was a whole aspect of that dialogue. So we know the boundaries of the land, what's capable of being built on, buildable within reasonable costs. Things like if we hit a huge amount of clays, it would probably trigger pilings and costs, so we wanted to get a handle on that, or vice versa. If we found it to be heavily wetlands, that it would not be permissible to build without mitigating it, and there's a cost associated. So we got all that done. The other part is to start trying to footprint some kind of building on the site. And that was through a lot of work, Dr. Hayes, Principal Chris, and some of his staff. We developed a outline, education specification worksheet. And that gave us a first blush on what kinds of items you want on the building, in the building, and associations to them. We went through five schemes, but these are all concept. None of them have been approved by you, you've probably seen them, but they still need to be worked on. But at least we had an idea of what spaces, an approximate square footage, and an approximate size. One of the issues was to try to fit as, the building on that site and as much parking, knowing that we wouldn't be able to fulfill the entire program on that site, we would need the existing adjoining site, which became mostly parking and some tennis courts. And we elected to, at this point, keep the gym, since it's the newest part, that might be a complementary to the project, either for the school district or jointly with the community. And also contemplating the possibility, and maybe even having a portion of the building be renovated for an SAU office. So these are all the what-ifs. So once we've done that, then we came up with an average cost for that kind of building. We visited some schools, and we kind of scoped it out. What occurred to Dr. Hayes is, well, jeez, how do we get more involved with the cost? Well, the cost is really subjective. We still need to go to that next level. We've done the concept, we've done the testing of the site. So the next step would be, your next warrant articles, is to get involved to a design level where we can articulate more clearly the program, the board would be more intimately involved in approving the program. involved in approving the program, and start really digesting the pieces. Well, then the question was, well, how do we get there, and how the budgets develop? And there was a slight dialogue about, well, how do you go about pricing it out? And there are really two methods, and this is not to be done at this point, this is like, if everything goes smoothly the next four or five months, you're going to be asked, okay, we are going to proceed with the next level of design, we need to start putting budgets, but we also have options on a delivery method. And the two most common ones here in New Hampshire is the traditional design bid bill, which is that chart over here, and it has a structure behind it on who are the players. So that is a very traditional, and in a nutshell, what it does is, once you start developing plans more intimately, we become kind of the agent who puts the numbers against the design to get a budget. So we're taking a budget right now, that you could go from here to here, we've got an average budget, now we've got to figure out what the real budget is, but it's based on the design. So we start narrowing the budget, hopefully coming down. But until we go through the design, it's very often, we find things that you forgot, or you wanted to put in the building that you didn't think about. It takes that time and effort to get there. So with that, we've come up with the budget, we come up with a design, and then that amount of monies is used to articulate a further design, it's not working drawings, but it's a complete design, design development, with materials, textures, sections through the building, an elevation, you get something of much more substance, it takes quite a bit of time. The other way of going through this process is, another common method is called construction manager, whereby there's a third agency involved, and that's the one with this triangle, and it's another entity. In New Hampshire, it's typically a very strong contractor who's willing to work as an agent during the process of design. So they implement some of their knowledge and skills on the cost. So we share the review of the design and the costs associated to it, and the intent there is to try to work the number as well. So it's a third party. Both of these two systems are very successful, the key to it is getting qualified people in any case, because with design bid bill, you've still got to have a contractor, and there again, what we recommend is a select list, so you have a contractor who's done a lot of schoolwork, who's got a good reputation, and works with education. So these are just two vehicles, two methods, that would be asked by the board if we get to that next level of looking at truly designing the building, to the point where we can get some harder numbers, to the point where we can get a warrant for a building cost and an actual design approved by the board. So that's kind of it in a nutshell, as I say, each one has the makeup of the players, and some of the acronyms here, you can look up on the upper right-hand corner. Schematic design is what we've done right now, that's where we're at. Then the next steps would be design, build, CD, construction documents, bid negotiations. So we've done our due diligence on the site, we've done our schematic, we've got our worksheet on the program, everything's got a thumbs up on the site, we've had good rapport with everybody. So it is a viable site to do what you need to do with the present program that has been conceptually conceived. So we're on the right track, but this is information for the next step, if so, if you're going to go in that direction to continue, this is something Jim thought might be helpful for you.
Dave, do you want to add anything?
No, if there's any questions, we can try to clarify.
Anyone want to start with some questions? I guess, I'll go first, then, in the construction management model, the construction manager is, I guess, in the conversation at the design level, so that individual is a builder? Or someone with them?
Most traditionally, there's two methods of construction managers, there is one contract where the construction manager is only an agent, does not do any construction, which is more typically done in Massachusetts than New Hampshire. New Hampshire uses another form, is construction manager who's also the builder, so he wears two hats, and that's more common in New Hampshire. So it is generally a fairly savvy contractor who's got some staff that can actually get heavily involved with helping look at the design, the specifications, the materials, and make comments to fine-tune the numbers. So you get them early on to help, then they become the contractor. Typically, they would bid out all the sub-trades and do fairly limited work, but they become the general contractor per se. So they kind of wear two hats.
So in that process where they're involved with the specifying of whatever part of the building, can you, maybe using some sort of an example, say how they can bring their experience to help control costs?
Right. Trying to think. For instance, on Somersworth, a recent project, the JBC, there, once they became a project and went to design development, a city develops a joint building committee, and it's members of the council, members of the school board. And this construction manager, for instance, and us were asked, okay, we have developed a budgetary number, but we want to explore some options. And one of them on that project was, we're going to do the exterior shot of brick, and the window sills, and coining out of pre-cast concrete as a budget. They were concerned with having a very durable, so they asked a question about granite, you know, what would granite cost? Having them involved, they were the agency who talked to subcontractors and got some numbers to talk about. And when we did that, we included that as an ad-alternate during the project bidding. So it brought up the committee's wishful thinking, wish lists, or whatever, what would it cost if? So they participated in that. Other areas might be choosing windows, for instance, what quality level window, instead of having just the architect's experience, you can ask the construction manager for their opinion. It works both ways, because if we were just the architect on the traditional way, we would still ask very similar people. But it brings them into the realm of understanding the building based on the owner's needs, because they're intimately involved. So when it is basically go out to bid, they know what needs to be done, they are intimately involved in the materials being selected, and they can help with some budget numbers, and crunching out some numbers to find out, you know, are you willing to look at alternatives through an entity that has access to those numbers?
So they, like, you mentioned windows, I'll run with that as an example. So if the committee says, well, we'd like to put in these kind of windows, well, what are our alternatives? Maybe the architect spec'd a certain window, but the manager has experience with that type of window, and says, well, yeah, that's a good window, but it's, for some reason, there's something difficult about the install, so it's going to take this much more time to install them, and even though they're cheaper, we're going to, it's going to be more expensive install.
And it works both ways, because then we'll share our experience and collaborate, and then the committee would articulate with that dialogue. There's more involvement with the school district using the CM, because there is that dialogue that needs to be reviewed and chosen. We had one project where we had looked at specifying some, what they call curtain wall, glass, and aluminum frames, and this particular construction manager brought in a different manufacturer, which we were not familiar with, and they brought him in and had them explain, and they felt comfortable enough to recommend them, and there was a savings. Opposite happens, sometimes somebody will recommend something, that we've had a bad experience, like on Somersworth, we had to have an air barrier, and there was a real push to use somebody else, and we had some bad experiences, and because of that, collaboratively, we went a different way. But it's a collaboration, and the intent is trying to help control the cost before going out to bid, and having a number before going out. But there's pluses and minuses in both venues.
So it would be much more hands-on, the community, the committee would need to be asking a lot of the questions
Right.
About considering alternatives to various things.
And it's driven by the committee, too, the committee can request variations of reviewing different items as we go along through the process. So it's making sure there's an involved group of people who are going to come to meetings and make decisions.
Okay, other questions?
Without having an opportunity to digest your presentation, just some things that popped to my head, I don't even know if they make sense, because this is definitely out of my realm of expertise, so bear with me, please. Is there a list that you can provide the board outlining potential pros and cons to each model, like the design process or the construction management?
It's so hard to do, because it would be very generic. There is some articles that I've seen that I can probably pass on to Dr. Hayes, I'd rather give you published pros and cons, dos and don'ts. And you're going to find, unfortunately, it's hard to make a decision, because some outweigh the other. I believe the DOE website, Department of Ed, has some writings about the two methods, and I also have a very old article
Okay.
Talking about a variety of areas, there's one article that's like five different ways, and I can circle the two we're talking about, so don't confuse the issue, there's plenty of choices to make. AIA is, American Institute of Architects.
Basically, what you're going to find at this level is, this is a dumbed-down description, this is real simple for you to see the chart of the different pieces. Well, it just basically says, you know, architect and a construction manager on the same level, or it's just an architect. A lot of the materials are going to reiterate that, but go into more depth on each of those pieces.
Okay.
It's almost premature at this level to say that there's a favors method, until you get further down the process and you've got actual situations presented to you, then some of these factors that affect each of the methods come into play. Right now, you know, it's not a
It's not ready yet.
It's not a project, it's a, you know, what-if, so once you've got some of those actual project parameters in place, it makes it easier to make the selection.
And I can certainly do my own research, I'd rather be prepared in advance than, you know, if we have the time to prepare and gain knowledge prior to bringing a facility to fruition, I'd rather do that. On the DOE website, are there overall statistics of which schools have, in the state of New Hampshire, which districts have chosen a specific model? Like, the recent buildings like Somersworth, or?
They vary. I know early on, back in the early eighties, it was all design, build, build, traditional. Then mid to upper eighties, there was a sway into the construction manager. Then for, up till past couple of years, it was kind of a mixed bag. Lately, because the competition out there, they've been going more traditional, because of the bidding is a little more, I hate to say vicious, there's more competition. So it kind of can vary with the economy, it can vary with who's out there, who's capable, because you really want to make sure, if you're heading towards the CM, that you've got some qualified people on the list. And New Hampshire's a small state, and there's a lot of wannabes. There's a lot of good contractors who sometimes think of themselves as CMs, and there've been districts with some bad experiences, so you've got to be very careful. And Ed Murdo can help with that, too, because he has a list of people as well.
Thank you.
Dan, I realize that school building aid program is in a moratorium, and hopefully within the next six months or so, we'll learn new guidelines for new process and program. But I'm curious about, in your past experience, if an application is being made for state approval of a project, is that after schematic design, or after design development?
Traditionally, what, state aid? State aid would take care of all of this.
No, I understand that, but at some point, you need to get approval of your project.
Yes, what there is, is there's an application, A24P, which is preliminary, and that needs to be put in around, so if you're going to have a project that's coming up for construction, and it's been approved, in a sense of the school district, the December timeline is kind of the time you have to fill that application, even though you may be building in March, April, so you've got to fulfill the application by a certain deadline, I believe it's the December deadline traditionally, to get them on board.
But what I'm getting at, too, is, I mean, we've got a schematic design.
Right.
So these committees approved it, these folks approved it, is that sufficient?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, schematic design is sufficient to put into works the preliminary, because they understand that's also an estimate.
Because one of the things that they were wearing, and you may have heard me allude to it when we talked about the warrant, is whether we need to proceed and get approval in March for monies to do design development. Of course, that money could come out of expansion of school facilities, so, but in any case, whether we do that in this March, or we wait till the following March. Money and timing be what it is, I don't want to delay the project from moving forward.
I know in the past, Ed Murdo has always said, if you're still not sure when you're going to implement and spend the money, fill the application out, send it to me, I can always just put it, and we could actually do that with the schematic design, there's enough information there that he would accept that as an application if the funding was available right now.
What's a typical timeframe to do design development?
It's going to take four, five, six months to go through that. It's going to take, because it isn't the fact that it takes that much time, it takes that much time to articulate, talk about it, committees, you may have certain committees who are interested in sustainability, you're going to have different groups of people who want to look at things, come back to the board, and explore things. That takes time, and we need to have everybody up to speed and educated about different things. And we may visit some sites, but it just takes time to digest and feel comfortable with the design.
Okay.
It's a process.
No, I know, and I'm just wondering the timing of it, and the length of it, I mean, as you know, we're hopeful that SBA does come out next June with a new application process.
Right.
And if, from what we had heard, that if that is, that that plays out, then it would open the door to at least apply, even though
Exactly.
Even though at best, there'd be no reimbursement until July of 2013. And I just, I think, you know, Newmarket, I don't know what criteria they'll have for schools that have a higher priority, a higher need, but I think we're going to be right up there.
Yeah.
And so I think we need to be as ready as ready can be
Right.
To apply, and at least, you know, get what I think the state will then do, is take the projects and prioritize. So they may come back and say, you know what, Newmarket, you're third on the list, or whatever. And so we'd have some sense, and I just want to make sure we're ready to do that. If it can be done with schematic, then, okay, that's one thing.
It can be. The nice thing about the process that you've taken, we've done a very good due diligence on the site, and that's a big thing at Department of Ed, they hate having somebody give them a plan, and you have a site yet. Well, no. The site drives the project costs tremendously, so you've done exactly what the Department of Ed manual asks you to do about the due diligence. In the schematic, you have an ed-spec worksheet done. Dr. Hayes has developed it even further in articulating in a narrative, so there's enough stuff there that if we were to submit that pre-app, it's a great placeholder, because if nothing else, if it clicked, I know Ed will pull that and say, these guys are ready. So we could fill that out.
Okay.
You know, in about a week turnaround time.
Trying to put pieces together on the timing of all of this.
Because I think we've been methodical about the process, as I said, we've met with local authorities, state authorities, those things are always proving that the project is viable, and we've proved the site is viable.
And one you didn't mention was what, archaeological?
Yeah, we did an archaeological, which is a requirement by the state for many years that there may be some hidden treasures on the site based on past history of either early American or Native American, and there is a process, is an application process, which you went through, and you were clean. We've had some that you went through, and you were clean. We've had some that, you have to go to the next level, because they find some suspicious areas. They actually have to do some small diggings.
Just, we were near a cemetery.
Near a cemetery, and also near waterways. You had a small brook nearby. These are all high levels of areas, so the archaeologist goes in the historical data, as well as walk to site. And, and it can be anything that is over 50 years old. It doesn't mean ancient. It could be an old farmhouse, that it was unique historically, for instance. Or it could be Native American potential sites that they hunted near the river. We've hit things like that. So it's quite a process, but you've done your homework to this level quite admirably. I think we went up to see Ed, and he was very pleased what's been done to date.
Other thoughts or questions?
It's a lot to-
Want to digest, huh?
Yeah, it is a lot. And I'll get you some of those articles, and like you say, the AIA's probably got a good one as well, so we can give you two, three sources and digest that. And I'll probably answer some, but also develop more questions, which is fine. Being prepared is a good idea.
So as the project takes shape more, it might naturally tend to help us go this way or that way?
Because we're eventually going to talk to you and say, okay, we're going to start design development after about a month. You've got to think of a method, a delivery method, because we don't want to go too far if you want to go CM. If you don't, then we can just keep going. But there's going to be a point where we're going to ask you seriously, what do you want to consider? And it's your choice.
You know, I want to emphasize something, too. The other reason that I asked you to come, and it really plays out in these charts you've got, is that clearly we've got an estimate that's out there, that is a very rough estimate of cost. Built, you've got the schematic design, which says, here's the square footage roughly, and you have the state providing a construction number for high schools.
Right.
And it's multiplication, plus some other-
Squared foot number, based on-
Plus some other items that typically go into a project, and that's how we get to the 53 million. But as you can see on these, in construction management, for example, there's another budget estimate that comes out during design development, another one during the contract documents, and then, then obviously, the bidding. And similarly for the other process. But I, you know, I think it's important for people to know that, you've got one cost estimate, that isn't necessarily the cost estimate, and you further refine the problem and further refine the price. Right?
And by doing that, hopefully, we can work it the way you would like to see it. Hopefully, reduce it. But we don't know, because we haven't finished the program either. We may find things that, and it happens a lot. Well, geez, you know, we've been thinking about a program that we want to introduce. Some of it was one, they introduced a thistic program. There was out of district, it was costing a bunch of money, and the superintendent in the middle of the design process, boy, wouldn't it be nice if we had our own? Can we grab 1,000 square feet? And the budget allowed for that to be brought in at this schematic phase. So that's what's nice about the process. As you said, you can refine it, and hopefully be safe enough that you'll come out on top by the time you're done.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks very much. Dan, thanks, David. Thanks for coming. I appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, we have some correspondence?
You do. I did hand out to you tonight the elementary school newsletter, so you do have that. I thought, well, we spent so much time recently on the wellness policy. You'd be interested in this assessment that came from the Department of Education, although it was not based on the current policy. It still was a measure of how well our schools are doing to be in compliance with the department's expectations around that. And it's quite a bit to digest. I ran it by Diane Beech and Lisa Kumpf, who, who both, you know, read through it and said, you know, in summary, we're, we've done very well. We're very, very close on this, and that the things through our new policy bring us right there, totally compliant. So that's good news. Let's see. Where am I here? Oh, the other, the other piece of correspondence is the letter from Attorney Lowman. And again, it's all specifics relative to the Warren article and her rationale on different things, and even some options in there, if you wanted to write something a little differently. But that's all I have to say about that.
Okay.
And that's, that's all I have for correspondence.
Okay. And I guess the next is yours, Joan. We've been talking so much about the future. You've got, we've got a current budget update.
Right. I'd hope that we would have implemented our new software, and I could have generated a report, but due to technology issues, we haven't implemented yet. We're, our deadline now, our, our date to implement is February 1st. So hopefully, you'll have a nice shiny report in February. But I did, we have made a lot of adjustments to the budget, so when you get the budget printout from our new system, you'll see that a lot has changed. It now matches what our, when you look at our proposed FY13 budget, and you had a revised FY12 budget, that's what is in our accounting system now. And it's not something that's been done in the past. In the past, they've watched bottom line. I told you last year, I can't watch bottom line. I need to watch every line. I feel like I need to know that we're appropriately budgeted for retirement and for health insurance. So now, at least in the system we have, I'm able to, to manage that. And a lot earlier, I can tell you, my projection is that we're probably going to end the year with $50,000 or $60,000. We will not use the contingency. Based upon what I learned today in food services, we will not use that $25,000 that we had earmarked for food services. I said last meeting, we were in the black. Well, we ended December 31st with $1,000 to the good. And that really is due to the diligence of the new food service director that really has cut cost. We have increased our reimbursements from the federal government. Our, our sales, they're still struggling, but because she reduced costs so much, and has still been able to increase her reimbursements, we are doing 100% better, because I think every month, I reported to you last year, we were around $10,000 or $11,000 in the red every month. So to have, just to be balanced, is terrific. So to have some gain, and then over time, hopefully, increase participation. We're working very hard on it. So that, and the original contingency money that we had budgeted, we haven't had a need for. We haven't added a paraprofessional, although Jean and I had a conversation today about a possibility of another student going out of district. But right now, the special ed account could handle it, and our transportation, our special ed transportation line could handle, could handle offsetting that a little bit. So I'm not really worried about special ed, and with the, you know, another $12,000 coming in, I'm not really worried about that. Substitute lines seem to be okay, maybe a little bit high at the elementary school. We've had a couple of extended illnesses, so, you know, that causes that. Fuel lines, the fuel line at the elementary school for the oil is only 25% spent. Of course, we haven't had any cold weather. But at the high school, it's 60% spent. So that, it's so inefficient. So that, you know, electricity is on target. They're at 45% spent. So, I mean, I feel, you know, that, very comfortable in predicting that, yeah, we might have to spend a little bit more money at the high school on fuel, but we will have a savings at the elementary school. And the only other line that really is troubling to me is we're almost all spent in our telephone lines. And we implemented new telephone system. It had already been taken care of before I came, and we're really having a, we're struggling with the cost. It seems very high. What we would have implemented to save money, we went, the voice-over IP line and everything, and it's a struggle. We're looking at that contract very seriously, of getting out of that contract and going with another phone system. But I'll update you in the next couple of weeks on that. I mean, when I say we're, you know, we're over, it's, it's not going to be, you know, 25,000, because it's a small line to start with. But, but we're already expended at both schools. We've already spent all our money. So it's either, either poor budgeting-
Wasn't a good deal we thought it would be.
Yeah, either poor budgeting, or, or, or just the deal, it wasn't a good deal.
The expectation with that expenditure was that we were going to save money.
It was sold to us with this great, shiny-
And bigger bandwidth. Remember that?
Yeah.
I know.
And we have virtually no bandwidth. If, if, the explanation I received from not only our technology people, but our new software company, that we've had a couple of texts come out, because we're struggling with, with that, and we really need to have uninterrupted access to the internet, because we're having it hosted offsite, is you don't have enough bandwidth. And because you, you've combined your phones with your internet access, that in periods of, during times that are very busy on the phone, all of a sudden, you can't access the internet. So if you're going on a Saturday, or at night, you're fine. But if you're there at the height of, like someone mentioned at the high school, at 3:00, when school gets out, you all get kicked off the internet. You know, it's, it's, so it's, it's really a struggle for us. So we're investigating other options. We have a meeting tomorrow. We have to investigate other options.
So it might be worth buying out that contract, or somehow severing the agreement?
I think they're two separate things. I think we can purchase more bandwidth. We're going to look at that more closely tomorrow. We're looking at different companies for that. But the phone system is a, although it's somewhat a related matter, getting out of that contract may be difficult, but we're looking at that, too.
So that's where we stand with FY12. And as far as the, the high school boiler, a couple of weeks ago, Jim said, you know, we really need to get an idea of if, I mean, since I got here, and since Jim had gotten here, all we've heard about is issues with the boiler. And I went back and pulled all the invoices out over the past two years, what we've spent, and we've spent about $40,000 on repairs to the boiler. However, this year, we've only spent about $1,000. So I'm not, I, I wasn't quite sure, have we taken care of the problems that have been, you know, plaguing us, that, that have caused us to go down last fall, is before I even started, go down last fall, have no heat in the building, whatever. So we decided that perhaps we might need to write a Warren article to replace the boiler, whatever. So we had Harriman send a mechanical engineer over to look at it. And if the goal was to try to have a backup boiler, so to install two boilers, there's no way you can do it. You can't do it. You don't have the space. You'd have to build an addition on to house the boiler. I'm sure it's no place anybody wants to go. But his feeling was that the boiler was sound, that we might need some repairs to existing tubes. Jim and I had a lovely tour of the boiler room, of the tubes and the rusty things and all that stuff. But one of our major problems last year, and I think we replaced it maybe in, in the, in December or January, was the tank. The tank-
Expansion tank.
The expansion tank that keep, that kept leaking. And, and literally, there was a couple of inches on the water consistently, every single day. So little boards everywhere, and then that was having effect on other pieces of, if you've ever been in a boiler room, our boiler sits in this big, like, well thing. It's really awful.
And very tight quarters.
You can't move in there.
Yeah.
You can't, I don't know how anybody-
I can tell you're contemplating a career change.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the other, the other problem, the other problem with is, is, I don't know what those things were called up in the ceiling, but-
I think those were pumps. I think those are all the pumps.
When they go, it cost us a fortune to replace because of the labor hours it takes to disconnect them because of where they're located.
Right.
To find the problem, disconnect them, and replace them is a huge deal, because they're, they're not accessible.
Very awkward place to work, to do any kind of repairs.
And hot, too.
That's it, that. And wet, sometimes.
So, but the engineer's report was, he didn't necessarily agree with replacing the boiler. Because we've been tied up for the past couple of days, we haven't had a contact. I'm meeting with Dan on Monday, and hopefully have a proposal last minute, because you, we have to do the warrants Monday night. But my guess is, it's not going to be a Warren article. It might be short money to replace those tubes. And I know those have to be replaced because they're leaking, but their feeling was, you don't need to replace the boiler. So I mean, that's, that's a good thing for us. And we do have money in the, well, I didn't speak to that. We have only spent, on our repairs and maintenance line at the high school, we've only spent 44% of our money. We had budgeted about $120,000 there for special repairs and those things. And we got a great deal out of our custodian, Bob. He does almost everything himself. So we've saved a lot of money. Projects that we specked out through last year's budget were going to cost a lot of money, including fire and life safety. He did himself. Replaced locks, replaced, you know, all those things that were fire and life safety. He also did a lot of these jobs himself. So we're at the elementary school, we're 70% spent. We had certain projects lined up. They were done over the summer with contractors. It's, it's almost spent. We still have a lot of money left at the high school. We still have a lot of money left in the trust fund for the repairs. So it could be something that is small enough to be taken care of that way, and then there won't be a need for a Warren article. I will have information Monday night, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
There's just, there's been all this rumors about the boiler not working at the school, and our kids going to school, and it's cold, and they're freezing, and they're wearing coats and hats. And so can you speak to that? I mean, are we here?
Yeah, I, I got that today, and I contacted the principal, and he got back to me, and he, I guess, to summarize, there's some, some truth to that, because the system is very inefficient. Okay? So you'll have places where it's warm, and places where it's not, right?
We have-
And the custodian, and you know, and the custodian is, he's trying to go around and resolve issues, but it's not, it's not done easily and quickly. It's old equipment.
We have a room that has, we have a room that has a radiator, a cover. There's no heating pipes underneath it.
So that won't keep you warm. So I'd love to hear-
There's no heat in that room. There's no heat in that room.
Well, I, I've been told that some churches are heating their room with lights used for hibernating chicks.
Yeah. Well, I, I, perhaps that, I don't think so.
I haven't heard that.
We got an opinion from the, the fire chief, because we found, there was a complaint from this room. The custodian went in and pulled off the radiator covers. There's no, there's no heat. It was cut off, tied off, whatever. So we got, he wanted to buy portable heaters. And I said, I'm not putting a portable heater in there unless you have the fire chief come down and say, we can have it. So they had a specific, a specific kind of heater you could have, how many you could have in the room. Of course, we have electrical issues, so that could be a problem. But, so, so we did outfit that room with, with electrical, with electric heaters. But what he said is, he'll go into the building in the morning, and he opens up all the doors, trying to get the heat to move around. And you could have one room that it's, it's perfect, it's operating. Another room, someone might have touched the thermostat. There's no covers on the thermostats to shut, to keep people from, you know, at the end of the day, if they're hot-
Like we have here.
Right. At the end of the day, if they're hot, at 2:00, somebody might turn it down, and then nobody turns it back up. And then in the morning, you have to go around, he checks every thermostat every morning, gets all the heat going. And then you could have a problem with the radiator, where you need, the other day, he needed to replace something. There was no way to drain down that room. No shut-offs had ever been put in, or whatever things you use, to, to be able to shut it off. He had to wait and shut down an area of the building after hour. I mean, it's the whole thing. It's not a boiler.
It's not just the boiler.
It's not just the boiler. It's the whole thing. And then the other piece, I'm sure you can speak to, is, it's really noisy.
Right.
Like, it's, 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 you know, it interrupts instruction, because all of a sudden, everything's banging in the whole school.
Yeah.
Melissa, I'd love to hear the students' perspective. I think I'd love to hear.
The past two days, I have been wearing, like, hats and multiple scarves. But I do have, like, a body temperature problem, so I don't know if I'm, like, the right person. But I can say that some rooms, I know the upstairs Spanish room, I'm in there a couple periods a day, was very cold yesterday, and then today, it was very hot. So it's, it depends on the day, on which rooms are hot. I know the library was cold yesterday, but the library was very hot today. So I found myself shedding layers in certain rooms. So it's not consistently the same temperature in the building all the time. It is very inconsistent and-
Inefficient.
And inefficient. And there's never-
Fuel, right.
There's only a few rooms that are ever, like, decent temperature. They're sometime, they're usually extreme temperatures, like, either really cold or really hot. So I think it's a whole, not just a boiler issue, but like, a, just our entire heating system issue. Yeah.
I would expect after, for the school vacation week, that the thermostats ought to have been turned down a bit, and that might explain why on Tuesday-
It was cold.
The place was a little chilly.
Right.
But it sounds like you never know what to expect when you go from your A-period class to your B-period class, if you should stop at your locker and grab a coat, or put away your coat.
Yeah, I keep my coat on all day, or with me all day, just in case of-
Put it on your chair, or put it on your back.
Right, in my purse, or whatever.
That's great.
In case of a fire drill, too. I always keep my coat with me, because it gets cold.
We do have an obligation to heat that building, though, correct?
We do, and we're-
We can't send the kids to school if it's not, okay. I just wanted to check.
One thing that we may want to have Bob add to the evening custodian's checklist is to make sure that, you know, thermostats are set appropriately, so that in the morning, when people come in, they're with him.
I can speak from experience and say, this is not an individual Newmarket issue.
No, I'm sure.
I've had this issue everywhere, every building we've ever had. We've had issues with people touching the heat. They don't have them locked. And of course, we don't have an energy management system. I laugh when I say that.
have an energy management system. I laugh when I say that. But-
Oh, we do, but-
If you had an energy management system, that everything would be controlled, you know, remotely.
Bob is our energy manager.
That's what it's called.
Bob is. And I said, how do you know? You know, he'll say, oh, I got called out twice last night. And I'll say, do we have, like, my previous experiences, we had Honeywell would, you know, would be the, the company that would monitor the heat, and then a computer would generate a call or whatever. And he says, oh, a light comes on on the outside of the building, and the police go through the parking lot a lot at night, so the police call them. See, the light's on, heat must be down.
They know, yeah, they know to look for that light.
Right.
That's our, that's our, um, technology.
Okay, great.
And they go through there a lot, which is a good thing. And Bob's usually home, so that's a good thing.
That's a good thing.
So-
Yes, some days.
Well, yeah, thanks, thanks to all parties that make that semi-automatic system, make it so that Melissa doesn't have to pack a parka. She just needs three scarves.
I do. That's beside the point.
All right.
Gives a whole new meaning to how many people does it take to change a light bulb.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. Is there any more on the budget update? Covered a lot of ground there.
Thank you. Staying on top of everything.
I just have a comment, Mr. Chair. I know that, um, I'm glad, I'm relieved to hear that we're not going to necessarily need a new boiler at this point, because I know the last couple of years when we were batting around whether we would approve those funds, it was a lot of money. And we were debating, should, I mean, it was a, it was a roll of the dice whether those repairs would help our boiler, our very outdated boiler system. So I'm glad the dice roll is in our favor. That's just-
Yes, we need a couple good dice.
Joan, the next expansion tank, are they going to change it?
They did. We did it last, it was right after I started last year, they did. And it, it has made a big difference.
Okay, because that's, that's surge in water from the road, what it is.
I don't know what it is. All I know it was creating a lot of problems.
Mine just broke down, too, and I had it replaced.
I know, if, you know, if it gives way, you can have a real significant flood.
It does.
All right. Onto policy, then? It's been a while.
It has, but we're back.
I'm impressed, given that it's been a busy time of year.
Well, they, except for petty cash, the others have been a work in progress for a long time. There's a, a lot of change in the policy world for special education, and it's been real important that, um, that we have as current of policies there as you can, because as you know, sometimes that can be a contentious area. We want to have the right policies in place. But let me take petty cash first, and then I'll have Jean come up and give you some overview of these others. They're all here for a first reading tonight, so it's not for approval. The petty cash, a very modest change, but enough that I just simply deleted the current policy and added in the new language, the new language, just a little bit more specific about who can have a petty cash account, and what the upper limits are, and the limits of purchases and so forth. So, if there's anything you want to add to that.
It's pretty standard.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward, I think.
And, and it's clear with set dollar amounts that the, so those of you in the room that don't have the policy in front of them, petty cash allowable would be, has a maximum of a hundred dollars. And anything that's over fifty dollars as a single item would require a purchase order. It all makes sense, and it's like having numbers, not just a small amount. This makes it clear. And there's allowance for exceptions, which, which is important as well. So terrific.
Okay. And the remaining ones are, are all in the, pretty much all in the special ed, certainly in the student services area, I guess I can say it that way. And so, Jean, why don't you come up and just briefly walk, walk them through each of these one at a time, and what the changes mean, what the policy really does for us?
Sure. The procedural, the first one is procedural safeguards, and it is a revision. The procedural safeguards were just updated by the state of New Hampshire in December of this, this year, this past December of 2011. Before that, it hadn't been updated since 2007. So some of the language here is outdated. And although this is just, this is not the entire procedural safeguards booklet that we hand out to parents at multiple times during the special education process, what was here before just wasn't enough to be compliant for, for a, a policy. So this is changed to reflect those changes. It's not a huge difference, but it's a little more detail. Any questions about that one? It's pretty straightforward. The next one, if I have it in order, is, this is one I, that I suggested. It's new, and it doesn't really apply to us now. It's school district obligation under IDEA to parentally placed private school students. We do have an obligation, if and only if, there is a private school within the boundaries of our school district. We do not have any private schools within the boundaries of our school district. So right now, this is irrelevant. But should a private school open in our district, it's wise for us to have a policy in place. So what the policy says is that we're going to follow the state rules about the equalized apportionment of federal funds to children who are eligible, who are from our, in, who attend a private school in our town. So again, right now, it doesn't make any difference. We get federal funds from the IDEA, we get roughly, I think it's like a hundred and fifty-five thousand. And what we, what we would do is when, if we had a private school, this, what this says here is that we would go through a process that's required by law to determine who the children are in the special, in the private school who are eligible for special education funds. We'd add the number of students in that private school, doesn't matter where they live, if they go to school in our town. We would add the number, say there's four of them, and we have, let's just say we have a hundred, let's say we have ninety-six students right now who are special ed, and we have four in the private school. That would make a hundred students altogether. Each student would get a one one-hundredth of our special ed funds that come from the federal government. And again, it's about a hundred and fifty-five thousand. And that would then go, that share would be spent at the private school. There's no entitlement to any particular amount of services or any particular amount of funds, but that, that those monies would go to support those students' needs in some way. So again, it's, it's irrelevant to us right now. I hope it's always irrelevant to us. But should a private school come into the district, this is the way we would have to behave.
So the funds are distributed based on a, on the number of students receiving services, not on the significance of the need. So it, it could, it could work out that it's similar, but if, say, one student has a very extensive IEP, that would, that would cause some-
No, there's no difference.
Problem.
No, there's no difference. You could have a student in a private school who has an incredible IEP, all right? And then you could have a child in our school district who has, you know, a very mild IEP. The, the portion is by body count. It's not by services. It doesn't make a difference. And there's no entitlement to individual services to this private school. They don't, typically, it's around a thousand or eleven, twelve hundred dollars per student is about, about the amount of money that it ends up being. So for eleven or twelve hundred dollars, that amount of money would need to be spent at the private school, not necessarily on that student. There's a, a decision process made between the private school, the private school parents, and the public school. And they decide, they might decide to have training provided for their teachers to enable them to better meet the needs of students with special disabilities. They might want to have a speech therapist come over and consult for a while. But the money is spent, but it doesn't necessarily have to be spent on the student. It's just, it's a crazy way the law works. It makes no sense to me. And Meg certainly knows about it. To me, it's nuts. But again, it's something that we should, we should have if there's ever a private school.
And to give some scope to private school, in, in my, my short time in Beverly, for example, two schools opened to deal with autistic students. As we all know about the explosion in autism, I think there are people out there who look as a terrific business model, if you want to operate a private school, is a school for autistic students. And it doesn't mean you have to have dozens and dozens of students. You could open a very small school with a very few students and, and provide special services. And all of a sudden, we have a private school in, in Newmarket. So things like that do, do happen, especially for us anyway in the autistic world. So just to, so you understand what school can mean, can be very small, specialized school.
Thanks.
The next one is the programs for pupils with disabilities. This is a revision that I recommended to Dr. Hayes. You'll see a cross out. I'm, I'm looking to remove the statement at the discretion of the superintendent and/or his or her designee. Student who reach the age of twenty-one during the academic year may be allowed to complete the remainder of the year. I, that's not required under the IDEA. Usually, a student, when they reach their twenty-first birthday, if they have not yet received a regular high school diploma, these are usually the very disabled students, their eligibility for services ends on their twenty-first birthday. With this in there, we could have a twenty-first birthday September first, and that student would be able to have another whole year of services at taxpayer expense that we're not required to do. At that point in time, the, the adult services take over, funding the students at that point. And it makes no sense at all for us to burden ourselves with the availability of providing that extra services for students. I just think it's really, we don't have to do it. It's not required. And there's another agency that is required to pick them up at that point. And it's, it makes no sense for us to ask the taxpayers to do that, in my professional opinion. So I think we should just get rid of that.
Any comments on that one?
Going on to the next one is a referral procedure for special ed, special education services. This is another revision. And again, it is a revision driven by changes in the procedural safeguards and the fact that this one is just old, and it had some errors in it. So I've just simplified it and made it more compliant.
Any questions on that one?
Pretty straightforward. The next one is a new one.
Jean, can I interrupt you a minute?
Yes, yes.
You talked about adult services. How, how does that work if someone is at the age of twenty-one in adult services? What do you mean by adult services?
Well, the state of New Hampshire is required to support some level of state of services for adult students with, for adult individuals with disabilities. And those services typically don't kick in until students turn twenty-one, until they lose their eligibility of the public schools. They all, the, the adult services are designed to come in after. They don't want to duplicate anything. They'll come in after we are done with our services. And students who are eligible for adult services are students who have lifelong disabilities that affect their ability to be productive in society, their ability to live independently, their ability to have their medical and emotional, social needs met. So they're the more disabled students. And there's a variety of different amounts of funds depending on student needs. Parents apply for that. We, we help parents through the school system to get that going so there's a smooth transition. During those last few years, we have, we have representatives of the adult agencies, transition representatives attend our meetings so that there's a smooth transition.
So if a student was twenty-one, he was, let's say he was going to be a senior in Newmarket, he could finish in Newmarket?
I'm recommending that at twenty-one, he ends. Twenty-one, they end.
Well, how would he finish his year?
Wouldn't finish the year. Because we, students, students don't, students, by the time they reach twenty-one, they've already finished four years of high school, and they've had two, two or more years post-high school. We don't hold students back in special ed the way we used to years ago. If, if another year of the same thing is not going to improve their situation, we do individually design programs and move them with their age peers so that students have, you know, yeah.
But if, if things are handled properly, there's not a gap.
Right.
Leave us and move into other services.
Right.
Goes pretty well.
Right. Right. We, we have students go, they go through the graduation process with their grade. They go to graduation. They get an unsigned diploma. And then we sign it when they reach twenty-one and they're finished with services. But they go through that. They have the closure of the high school years. Then we get into transition services, world of work, working on independent living, that kind of thing. Okay, move on. The next one is evaluation requirements for students with specific learning disabilities. And this is a new one that's been required for a bit, but we're just getting around to it now. And it, it goes with the procedural safeguards again. It's, it basically says that we are complying with the requirements of the IDEA in, in evaluating for specific disabilities. It's, again, fairly generic, but we need to have it. I'm going to keep moving unless somebody has questions, okay?
Yes, correct.
And the next one is home education. And this is one that, that I had recommended to change in as well. And I recommend, I'm recommending a deletion. The rest of the policy is untouched. I'm recommending that students who are home educated not be considered eligible for special education if they are homeschooled, if parents choose the homeschooling option. There is no eligibility in the state of New Hampshire for special education services to be provided to parents who elect to homeschool. And I understand that Newmarket has made the decision to allow students to access an à la carte menu, if you can use the word, to let them take a class if they want to, or participate in a, a sport or whatever. But to get into some special ed services and not another would be difficult when you talk about the free and appropriate public education and the right to a free and appropriate public education. It's a very awkward thing to offer a part of a free and appropriate public education and not enough. And if we allot, if we, if we go, do more than we're required to do, we're setting ourselves up for a situation where we could eventually be, be in a liability place for not having provided all the services. And quite frankly, if parents want all the special education services, they have the right to access them. That all they need to do is come to the public school and access them. But if they're going to homeschool, that's a choice. And choices have consequences. And I believe the school district is safer not to make that an, an equal access part of the smorgasbord or the, you know, the menu of services that home, homeschool students can access. It's obviously your decision, but that's what I would recommend.
In my experience, I certainly agree with that. In fact, more so in my experience, participation in regular classes is something that's been denied as well. If you're homeschooling, that's where you get your instructional needs met. School activities and clubs, participation in athletic teams, use of books, attending social activities, you know, those things are, those things are typical. Participating in regular classes, I've seen places that do it. It's not like it's an unusual thing, but, but I've also been places where they, where they don't. You know, you run into, I know, I know for, for me in Beverly, the, the thing that we ran into was that you, when a student comes to your school, all of a sudden, they're registered, they have a student number, and then you get to statewide testing, and do they take the test? And then are you, now you're held accountable for a kid's testing when they're not educated in your school. So we just steered clear of it. But, but I don't know that this has caused us any difficulties, and so-
I don't know of any problems.
I don't have a reason for striking it. It was recommended in the school board association policy to have it. But I agree with Jean in terms of the special ed services.
And, and so it needs, and I'm just looking at the legal references here, too. So it's meeting our minimum requirements under homeschool. So-
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. It's, it's more than meeting the minimum requirements. It's more than meeting the minimum requirements because you're allowing them access to public education.
Right, right.
You don't have to do that.
You don't have to do that. Any questions? The next one is a revision. And this is a revision based, it is, it's based on the Family Education Rights to Privacy Act and changes that have happened, better known as FERPA, and changes that have happened to FERPA. It's rewords. There's some issues about military access to students and things that have changed since this was last done. So it's just been updated to reflect more what's required based on the family rights, educational rights to privacy. So it's, it's really just an update, and it needed to just be redone. So I use language from something that our attorney had recommended. And that's it for me. If there's any questions.
Any more questions? Jack, do you have something?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jean.
Okay, so at our next meeting, we'll hopefully put the seal on those.
Yep.
Okay. Do we have any resignations or other leave requests?
None.
Nominations?
Not yet.
Getting close?
Uh, getting close. I know they're at a stage of final interviews for the math position that's vacant. position that's vacant in a couple of weeks, I think.
Okay. Um, we have a manifest.
Yes, we do. Um, I'd like to make a motion to accept the total of all manifests in the amount of one million eighty-four thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. We have calendar.
A busy one.
A busy one. And this is just the evenings.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so Project Graduation Bingo on Saturday. Um, Monday, we have a budget committee meeting, wow.
Budget committee.
That works. Go with it.
Been there.
In interest of time, I won't correct myself.
[laughing]
Um, immediately followed by a school board meeting, um, as that meets, uh, the date requirement for finalizing our warrant. Um, the, on Tuesday, this is primary voting day, and that is taking place at the junior, senior high school.
High school.
Yes.
Um, and, um, if you plan on, uh, doing so, um, keep in mind the hours of the day that, um, the blinking lights are flashing when the kids are coming and going from school. Those would probably be, if you go more towards, uh, lunchtime or in the evening, that would probably make the traffic congestion a little bit easier. But obviously, anytime you'd like to vote, encourage it.
We received an alert now. I do.
Yeah. You probably did. We had a meeting, uh, last week, I think it was, about, uh, yeah, it was, uh, about coordinating all of the, the layout, the parking, police and so forth. And the traffic pattern will be the same one that it is now, that the entrance is over more by the Lamprey Health and you come in and go around the building and then park. Um, students will be parking in that lower lot, if you will. So all the back and all the side is available. Um, we have staff parking elsewhere. We've arranged with Rob Carpenter, they'll be parking across the street. And we're doing things to encourage carpooling with them. Um, police will be out, um, through the day, I believe, um, at the exit area here to make sure people don't go in the exit and make sure that they can get out when there's time to leave. Um, so I think it's a pretty good plan. It's very well set up so that we'll be able to still operate school and people can vote easily.
Excellent.
Yeah.
And so that evening, um, it'll be very convenient. One can vote and leave your car in the same place and proceed to the question and answer session, um, at the high school at six-thirty. And again, uh, there will be childcare provided.
Yes.
On site there.
Right.
Uh, there are tours.
Oh, can I just say, I think Chris said that that's gonna be televised, the question and answer. Of course, Williams, did you know, did you know that?
Could be.
I, I think, he's downstairs, obviously.
Terry's not there, but I, uh.
I think he thought that that was the idea.
Which is fine. I don't have a problem with that, but it's really.
Just to let people know they could, if they can't get there, whatever.
Future's meeting.
They can watch from home.
I'm not sure they can broadcast live from there. Maybe we can now.
I don't think they can broadcast.
So, it, it might be.
Oh, okay, so taped for later.
Tape to play, if you will.
My dad.
Right.
Okay.
But, uh, someday we'll be there. Um, uh, Thursday at eight AM, there'll be a tour of the junior, senior high school. Again, go to the gym entrance.
Yep.
And similarly, on Friday at twelve-thirty, again, at the gym entrance.
Are those going to be taped as well?
Don't know.
I didn't know.
Yeah, somebody, I saw somebody.
Chris told me that or not, I can't remember.
I raised a question today. I think it'd be very difficult to do.
Yeah.
Um, we haven't really talked about it, but I know when I saw the question raised, I thought, wow, we're gonna have multiple groups going, while school's in session, kids passing.
With video care, that would be a little too much.
Be a little difficult to do, but.
No, but that might be a really fun s- school project for students.
Might be. We'll, we'll see.
If that doesn't, you know.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll talk about it and see. I think, you know, certainly, a- as I was trying to do the other evening, I think it's really important that, and we've sort of described it here tonight, to get inside that building and have a real feel for what day-to-day is like in that, in that building and the kinds of conditions that people are working under, so.
The, um, it's a crazy idea. I know the technology's out there. I saw it over at, uh, I guess, uh, the EMS store in, over in Portsmouth. Um, you can buy helmet cams, you know, for bikers or skiers.
Shut up.
Okay.
Shut up.
We're not there yet.
So, but we could, you know, maybe, you know, put on, put one on various students, uh.
Chris is, Chris is just downstairs, loving this.
All right, enough said on that. Um, so that brings us through next week, uh, the town public, oh, sorry, the public hearing on the seventeenth, um, the following Tuesday should be noted, and that'll be in the auditorium downstairs here.
Can I go back just a second, just for the hell of it?
Sure.
On the eleventh, not that this is school-related, but was, didn't the town push their public hearing on the wastewater treatment plant and the Macintosh well to the eleventh?
I believe you're right.
So that's another meeting, not related to the school, but in case anyone's interested, that will be on the eleventh. Sorry.
Every, something every day.
Yes, there is.
Um, then we have, um, so the public hearing on the seventeenth and our, we have a school board meeting on the nineteenth. And then, um, grades close on the twentieth for Melissa's second-to-last semester of high school.
Dang!
And I think that's enough said for the calendar.
Is the public hearing on the seventeenth, is that to talk about both the town and the school warrant?
Yes, yes. The budget committee, it's the budget committee's meeting and it was their, uh, preference that it all be discussed in the same evening.
Last I knew, the town was going first, but things can change, but that's what I expect.
Okay.
So.
What's the one on the eleventh again?
The one on the eleventh was for the, the town council to entertain public hearing on the wastewater treatment, the Macintosh well, and I think there were some other things. I can't remember exactly, but.
I, I just wanted to say to, on behalf of Project Graduation, which I know I'm not still involved in, but I can tell myself, um, they, they could really use people's support. And Bingo is such a fun event, so if you're around Saturday, um, the doors open over there at eleven-thirty. They could really use people's support this year. It's been, it's been a tough year, so if you're around, please come play.
The seniors would appreciate it.
We would.
Okay. Um, I've got one other thing to, to mention. I guess I didn't have a better spot to put other than, other section. But, um, I just wanted to briefly discuss, um, more, better communication, I guess, with our state legislators. Um, I, I know that they've been already pretty active in their new session and, um, some of the bills that they've taken up are very much related to, um, education. And, um, I'd like to, um, schedule, you know, hopefully make overtures to them to have them come to a meeting maybe sometime in February, um, so that we can have a better dialogue with them and, um, express our concerns and hear some of the input of, of why, um, what the motivations are behind some of the, the bills that are presently in play. That'd be good education for the entire community. Um, so, I, I'm, I'm seeing nods and.
Definitely. Good idea.
Excellent, so.
I'll take care of that.
Awesome.
Yep. Just the representatives or would you like me to invite Senator Prescott?
Um, who? I, I don't want to exclude anyone, certainly.
I know, I'm just.
Um, I don't, and I'm not really sure where to start. Um.
A lot of the activity now is.
Is in the house.
I think is in the house. That's why I said that.
Yeah, so I think that might make sense to start with those folks.
Yeah, okay.
And, um, and then move from there. Hopefully, we'll, will be a preferred stop for them all and they'll, they'll be calling us to, uh, attend as well.
Okay.
Okay, um, enough said on that. We do have reason for, um, non-public session this evening. So I entertain a motion to go into non-public session, uh, under RSA ninety-one A, colon, three, Roman numeral two, paragraphs A and D.
So moved.
Second.
Vote, call, vote. Cliff Chase.
Aye.
Linda Montagani.
Aye.
Kelly Foster.
Aye.
Jett Jablonsky.
Aye.
Meg Linnemore.
Aye.
Okay, nine PM.
Night, guys.